Good morning. It's Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, where the Board of Commissioners, Room 1115, Commercial Street Northeast in Salem for a weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and if you'd join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bit of an icy morning and more to come, so warm it up right away with a couple presentations. The first is on Santa Central results. Kimberly Moore, Foster Parent Association, Kathy Crocker, does volunteers. Maybe you'll be talking about it. We're given a nice collection of, a nice note and collection of thank you notes and pictures from kids that were recipients and families, and see a lot of happy faces, so maybe you can tell us a little more about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Like you said, I'm Kathy Crocker, Volunteer Services Coordinator for Marion County, and I had the privilege of being handed the torch, along with our Sunshine Committee, for this really great program called Santa Central. Diane Sheath and Randy Holcomb had done this in the past and done a wonderful job for 15 years. I'm here today with Kimberly Moore and Estella Cervantes, and they put together this wonderful book that does show all of the appreciation from the families. So I wanted just to introduce them, if you would.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Moore. I'm the President of the Marion Pope Foster Parent Association.
Real close, if you would.
Okay. Hi, and I'm Estella Cervantes, and I am Resource Coordinator for the Foster Parent Association. So part of what we wanted to share with you today, and what we wanted to say, is a huge thank you to Marion County staff. A lot of people stepped up and helped us provide these gifts for the families over the holidays that wouldn't have had them otherwise. We served 126 families, and that equaled 432 kids. Each kid got to request one gift of a value of about $30, and then we had some really great businesses that stepped up. One was Cinnabar, who gave us 100 movie tickets, which was a great donation, and one that especially teens really appreciated, I think. One thing I wanted to say was I was so impressed with these ladies and how organized they were. You should have seen the room. It was incredible. They had everything so well organized, taped off by families, and so when they came in and picked up their gifts, they knew exactly what they were getting. Do you want to share anymore about how the process works?
Well, we start off by publishing the request form that the families print off and ask the children what their Christmas wishes are, so they get those back to us, sometimes not on time, as Kathy and I learned this year. This is both our first years in this position. Estella is the expert. She's been doing it for quite a while, but once they request these gifts, I get them and I send them off to Kathy and her shopping elves. And from there, they try to find the best deal. You know, it takes a while to find these things, and if they're not sure where they're at, they have to search for them. They bring them back to us. We alphabetize and numeric categorize. There's lots of paperwork processed to do. Once we get it, we bag it. Once the whole family has gotten all the gifts requested for those children, then we bag it up and we have distribution days that they come and pick them up, and hopefully they've gotten everything they wished for.
Estella, would you mind talking a little bit about, as the foster parents, they really don't receive very much income for these kids, so how does this help supplement?
Well, you know, if we divide them, the amount that they get per month, it averages out to be about $24 a day, and that's about what I pay for childcare. I pay a little bit more than that, actually. And our hope is that our gift is not the only gift that they get, but it's their second. And we used to do two gifts, and we hope to do two gifts per child again, so it would be their second and third gift, or their third and fourth gift, you know. Our mission is to provide, you know, for these kiddos that aren't in their own homes and make Christmas the best Christmas that they could have in the circumstance that they're in, and so.
Well, and my understanding is they get money for their food and housing and clothing and such, but when it comes to birthdays and holidays, there's not much left over to provide. So a huge thank you to Marion County staff for stepping up.
I also want to mention, you know, there's a big commercial on Sleep Country, and a lot of people say, "Well, what about Sleep Country because it's so well advertised?" Well, because Marion County has our association, we probably get 1% of what they have. You know, the other counties that don't have the association gets more of that stuff. We really don't get that because we have our association. So we really don't see any of the Sleep Country stuff.
We do have other businesses that help partner with us. Curves, banks, churches, businesses make anonymous donations, and between the Sheriff's Department, they are the key participants. There would be no way this program could happen if they weren't part of it. The businesses and other contributors may donate 5%, maybe. The Sheriff's Department and the Marion County staff are phenomenal. They provide everything else, and we honestly couldn't do it without them.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do.
I have a question and just a quick comment. What is the average number of children in a foster family?
You can have from one, the most family, or the most kids we had in the family this year was seven.
Seven, yes. And the reason I'm asking is, and I'm very proud of it, and I've mentioned it before, our Woodburn Rotary Club has adopted a foster family, and this was our second year. There are five children, so that's a lot of teenage boys to take care of at one time under one roof, and you know, and I'm just amazed at the generosity, the giving that these foster parents, I mean, to open up your home, and in this case, this is raising a second family. Their other kids are grown and out of the house, and what these families, the individuals, and as a family, what they give to the foster kids is, first of all, extremely valuable, but it's just unbelievable that people can do this. I have such a tremendous amount of respect for what they do, what they give, and the great job. It's so impressive to go into their home and see the kind of family unit that they're creating and bringing the foster kids together as brothers in that household, and it's just so, bless you for what you do, and I'm so glad you're here today to talk about it, and perhaps it'll encourage other people to think about being a foster parent, or at least helping with the program. Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Well, I want to also thank you for coming and giving the report. I can't remember in all the years that I've been here whether we've had a report on Santa Central at board sessions, so this is great that we can get a little bit more information and recognition about it, and I'm so glad the sheriff is here to hear it firsthand because, like you said, his employees, his staff in his department really deserve the lion's share of the credit for this, and I see all the emails going through, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful project. I did want to tag on to the comment about being a foster parent. We had two foster children just for a real short time in the 1990s, and times have changed. I know costs have gone up and perhaps the reimbursement has gone up, but Kathy, your point, we got a small clothing allowance, just a one-time clothing allowance right up front, and these were two boys, nine and 11. The amount that you get every month just barely pays for the food, and if there's any additional medical types of expenses that aren't covered by the insurance and those types of things. So if you want to have, you know, Little League or swimming lessons or anything on top of it, you're really paying out of pocket, and so if you have multiple children in your family, as Commissioner Milne was talking about, it really can be a hardship for those foster families to come up with the income to give those children a normal Christmas, and so I think this is a really, really important thing, to be able to supplement what those families already do.
As you know, the cost only goes up as they get older, and wait till you have foster children in college.
Yep.
Then it's even more interesting.
All right. Well, again, thank you for the work you do and coming in this morning, and again, just looking at these pictures, I can, I don't need any writing. I can tell it makes people happy and it's good. Thank you very much.
But while they're gathering their things up, I don't want to forget to take the opportunity to talk about in our striking out meth in Marion, and now we are striking out meth in Marion Pope County, the foster children, the Foster Parent Association is so critical to what we do and bringing the children and their foster parents, so they can just enjoy a day of being just a regular kid and all the great activities that go on around them. And so the relationship we have with the Foster Parent Association is critical in that event being really a positive time for those kids and their foster families. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All right. Next is quarterly report from SEDCOR. Couple of my favorites. Chad Freeman and Nick Harville are here. Maybe somebody else.
Commissioner, thank you, and I appreciate being recognized as your favorite. I've told everybody else.
It's in some of my.
Some of your favorites. Thank you.
Like your favorite child, right?
You may be here a year now, but.
Appreciate that. As we said, my name is Chad Freeman. I'm the President of SEDCOR, and we're going to take a little bit different tack today. I know, Commissioner, you and I had spoken, one of the things that you suggested, and Patty, Commissioner Milne as well, thought would be a good idea as well, was to talk a little bit about some of the jobs that may be open for Marion County, recognizing that a lot of our work is geared towards trying to help create jobs, and all types of jobs for the residents here of the county. So we've invited Martin Croll, who will speak a little bit with us today about, from the Employment Department, to really give a little bit of an analysis and some places where folks can start to learn about the jobs that are here, what skills they need, and where they can go to be successful as well on that. So before we get there, I'd like to formally thank you as well to the Commissioners for the support that recently authorized for us as we worked on the federal grant and provided the really first investment in this matching grant that we've been working on, the Make It in America, and for us, the Make It in the Mid Willamette Valley Grant. And so I really wanted to express your appreciation, support for all that we do to grow jobs, and as we've pulled in some of the feds, to really help make that more possible as well. So I'd like to formally acknowledge that and say thank you. With that, before I turn it over to Martin, I'd like to have Nick Harville to speak a little about some of the work that he has been doing, and I think he's got some great stories as well about some of the things that have been going on. So, Nick?
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Harville, Retention and Expansion Manager for SEDCOR. Over the last few months, we've talked about business retention and expansion, and we have moved forward substantially with our BRNE program that we're doing in partnership with Oregon State University, Bruce Sorty from Rural Studies. I'm very happy to tell you that even the small communities up the canyon want to participate in this program, which I think it's vital that they do because they still want to grow. They want to create economic development in their communities. They don't know how to do it, and this will definitely help them get down that road. I've met with several of the city councils, Almsville, a few other councils, to explain what this is, and it's really people from the community going out, talking to businesses in the community and finding out what their issues and concerns are and what they need, communications that may not otherwise happen. I'm sure that one of the things that will float to the top will be workforce, and we've continued to do that. We've now expanded our work to nine school districts in both counties, and bringing private industry into the public schools so that kids get some practical, hireable skills. The other part of my job is expansion, and we have been, I would say inundated in the last two months at least on companies within Marion County, most of them with production and processing of fruits, berries. Some of these people are talking about doubling and tripling their production in berry production and hazel nuts.
Filberts.
But it's encouraging. We've had a lot of people looking at empty buildings, even in the small communities, because that's where a lot of their product comes from, and a lot of these companies, several of these companies are from outside of the valley that want to move in. So that would be new dollars into the economy. It's been a very, very busy winter.
With that, what I'd like to do is pick up on a little bit of that theme which Nick had mentioned around workforce and ask Martin to speak a little bit about what the Employment Department, what you guys are seeing in opportunities, as well as where folks here in Marion County may look and see opportunities, they're looking for their next job.
Definitely. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Chatsa. My name is Martin Crell with the Employment Department. So when most people think of the Employment Department, they probably think of unemployment insurance, as well as our local workforce centers where we work with job seekers to get them job ready and help them out with any of the resources they need to find a job.
Excuse me, could you pull a little bit closer?
There's a little street noise right behind us.
Yeah, just right into it.
Okay. Great. So like I said, our local workforce centers, we work with job seekers to help them find work, as well as with employers to help them find the employees they need. But the Employment Department also has a small research division, which compiles all the state and local employment and unemployment data that you read monthly in the news. We provide occupation projections and information on wages, among many other items. So my role is within the research division of the Employment Department as an economist, to supply labor market information to businesses in the community, economic development groups, community organizations, and really any other individuals in the community looking for that statistical and economic information to make informed decisions. So on that, let's talk about the labor market. In Marion County, the unemployment rate in December was 7.8%, and that's down from 9.2% last year, and down from the peak of 11.3% in March 2010. So the rate is trending down, which is good news. However, it's still higher than normal than what it was before the recession, and it's still higher than the statewide rate of 7% and the nationwide rate of 6.7%. As far as the number of unemployed, there's about 11,000 unemployed individuals in Marion County. Again, that number has been trending down. A year ago, it was just under 14,000, and in the peak, there's about 19,000 unemployed individuals in the county. As far as employment, we're seeing employment growth over the year, kind of consistent employment gains. Last year, 2013, was definitely a good year for employment, and much of that was driven by growth in the private sector. As a public sector, kind of saw year-over-year losses throughout much of 2013, and a lot of that was in the local government sector. Some of the industries that were seeing strong growth is leisure and hospitality, so accommodation and food services, that sector's been performing pretty well. Professional and business services, so a lot of your legal, accounting, tax preparation, employment agencies, call centers, some of those type services are doing pretty well. Retail trade's been doing good, and even the construction and manufacturing sector has kind of rebounded and continued to see, and saw growth last year, which is good, since those industries were hit rather hard during the recession, especially the construction sector, which lost about 40% of employment in that industry, which is pretty severe if you imagine if you're a business owner losing about 40% of your workforce in that short amount of time. So overall, yeah, we're seeing strong growth in the private, or stronger growth in private sector, and that's picking up. And as a public sector, as those losses kind of stabilize, and we see some gains, overall gains were increased as well. So looking at kind of more where are the jobs, as far as what occupations we're seeing in the economy, there's a couple of different sources we can look at. The Oregon Employment Department has their iMatch Skills System, which is our system to help connect job seekers with employers. And as of right now, the kind of the top listings in Marion County are retail salespersons, customer service representatives, food preparation and serving workers, heavy and tractor trailer drivers, so truck drivers, supervisors of retail sales, workers, cashiers, registered nurses, home health aides. And that's just in our iMatch system. Another source is through the conference board, they kind of gather job postings from all the kind of various job boards and online postings and compile it in one source, and kind of seen similar trends as far as occupations in there. Again, kind of the retail sector jobs, registered nurses, truck drivers, customer service representatives, some of the kind of healthcare assistants as far as home health aides, personal care aides, nursing assistants, as well as some computer system analysts and kind of social and human service assistants. So those two sources definitely kind of point to some broad occupational groups that we're seeing have strong growth as far as the sales and related occupations, office and administrative support, healthcare practitioners and technical occupations. Again, some of those computer and IT-related jobs, as well as management occupations as well. So kind of looking again back, taking a step back and looking at the overall labor market, we're definitely seeing gains in employment, as well as decreasing levels of unemployed. So those two factors kind of combined definitely paint a better picture for job seekers out there, so more opportunities for job seekers as those trends improve and the overall labor market kind of gets back to where it was before the recession. However, we still have a ways to go to get back there, and it is competitive still for job seekers out there to find a job. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or attempt to answer.
Thank you, Martin. I'm not going to downplay the good news. We always want good news, but as you said, we have a long, long way to go.
Yeah, there are some.
But when we talk about unemployment, we also know that some of these figures that you're sharing with us don't, what I'd like you to address is those who have stopped looking, and even when we count those who have, are no longer in the unemployment numbers, they are employed, but there are many of those who are working two jobs, or they're working a job that is not quite what they had previously. They're underemployed. Can you talk a little bit about that here in the valley?
Yeah, definitely. So we don't have numbers specifically at the county level, but looking at the kind of broader state level, let's say if you include those discouraged workers and people who, I guess I'll take one step back. So to be counted as unemployed, people have had to search for work within the past four weeks and kind of be active in the labor force, searching for work. So if they haven't actively searched for work, whether they're discouraged, or maybe searched within the last year, but aren't really active in the labor force, they're captured in some other rates of unemployment. So when you include those individuals in the kind of the unemployment rate calculations, it jumps up about 1% to 2% as far as those discouraged or marginally attacked workers. But then that's just kind of part of the picture. Let's say if you include those people who are working part-time but want full-time employment, just can't find it at the time, then the rate really goes up. So this is like the broad kind of underemployed measure of unemployment. In Oregon, that rate was 15.7%, and the standard rate was 7. So again, it was about double. So if you want to, like for Marion County, it's 7.8%. If you imagine double that, double that rate, so for the part-time employee but want full-time employment, and some of those discouraged workers as well, so it's about double the standard rate. And then one other issue, kind of with the unemployment situation too, is the number of long-term unemployed. Statewide, about one-third of the unemployed individuals are considered long-term unemployed, so unemployed for six months or longer. So that's kind of another issue in there as well.
Just one final comment, then, and again, I want to thank Chad and Nick. You guys work so hard, and the progress that you've contributed to our local economy is just outstanding, and it doesn't happen in government. It can only happen through the efforts of SEDCOR and like organizations, and then with the cooperation of the state. So we need more good-paying jobs. We need what Nick is working on, the skills, because if the economy can start to grow, then these jobs appear because businesses are healthy and growing and prosperous, and that gets the money going through the community again. So all your efforts are really appreciated, and all good news is great, but it's always important to put it in context. We've got a long way to go, so keep working.
Commissioner, if I can address that quickly, I couldn't agree with you more that I think we've, we have been able to make some strides in working with our local companies, who really are the heroes here, and as you look at, you know, some of the work that we've talked about before, you've got GK Machine, Garmin, Hennings, and Willamette Valley Fruit, which have all made investments in the last year, and all looking to hire folks that will continue to ripple throughout the economy. But I know we certainly see that there's a long ways to go, and even at the 7% number, we're 7.8 here within the county, that's still way too high, and so we recognize that there's a lot of work to do, and we're looking forward to doing that and taking that, that next step. Thank you for your support on that.
Yeah, and then that's why too, our lottery dollars that come to the county that we can put back into the community, into companies like GK Machine, and we see, they aren't huge dollars relatively speaking, but it makes a difference in that company being able to grow and expand and create new jobs, so it all has to work together.
We had a SEDCOR Construction Alliance meeting yesterday, and one of the main topics of conversation was, now that things are kind of starting to turn around, everybody's worried if they will be able to find enough workers to work for them. And if you saw the paper recently that Salem Kaiser got a CTE grant, part of that grant is to build a house, and that was the great work of Charlene Grove from Salem Kaiser School District. The grant application was all based on the SEDCOR Construction Alliance 10 Fundamental Skills. So that's what they want those kids to come out with. So we're creating a workforce to fill that gap that's going to be there. It will be there, and we're just trying to fill part of it.
Would you just give us a nickel version of what this Make It in America/Make It in Willamette Valley, whatever it's called, grant is about and how it's going to impact jobs?
Absolutely. This was an opportunity for us to apply to a federal grant, and we worked in partnership with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. The total project size is about $800,000, of which the feds were putting in $400,000. This includes, from our portion of the work that SEDCOR will be leading, really is increasing the capacity to do this business retention and expansion work across the region. As we meet with, and our focus is twofold. One, there's an in-depth analysis piece that we'll be working with a third party to put together really a better snapshot of who we are, both statistically using NACs codes and other mechanisms, so that we can really identify who our manufacturing basis is, basis are, excuse me. And then the second part for us is a three-year effort to increase our outreach, to meet directly with these companies, try to find out what folks need, if there's a way to connect them to resources, markets, et cetera, to help them add one job, five job, or 10 jobs over this period. The goal of the federal grant was to increase manufacturing in the U.S., and that's why it was couched under Make It in America. How do we bring manufacturing jobs back from overseas? And so these are an expansion, really, to recognize the strong framework that we have here and expand that so that we can add more jobs and try to build more here in the U.S., and more specifically, and more selfishly for us here in our region.
Thank you.
All right. Just thank you all for what you're doing, keeping it up. As I'm listening, I still think we were kind of the first ones to go into kind of a recession, and it seems like we lagged coming out. Looks like you ought to be one of the early back, but it hasn't worked here, but I know you're doing what you can to change that.
We're working and appreciate your help as we work to do that and add jobs here.
All right.
Thank you.
You're still some of my favorites.
Some of your favorites. I'll take that as a win. Thank you.
All right. Now, our next item is public comment. A number of people have come into the meeting since the sign-up sheet came in. Do any of you wish to make some type of a statement or comment this morning? All right, we'll just take you, and if you'd come up, give us your name and address, and we're just looking for a couple minutes or whatever you might want to tell us to the microphone, if you would, name and address and go again.
Is it okay to comment on the medical marijuana ban?
Okay.
That's okay? My name's Christopher Os, and address is 3795 Cruising Creek Road, Salem, Oregon.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear your last name.
It's Os, O-S-S.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. But if you look on Oregon Live, they did a poll, should local governments be able to restrict or ban the medical marijuana retail establishments? 72.75 said no, 26.06 said yes, 1.19 had no opinion. So it seems favorably to me that everyone in Oregon says that it is not up to local, it's up to the state. And Representative Buckley, who was the co-sponsor of the bill, said that the GMO bill should apply to the medical marijuana distribution, which permits or prohibits local governments from regulating from seed to sale. The Office of the Legislative Council's preliminary analysis concluded that it was up to the state, not local governments, to regulate marijuana from seed to sale. Quotations from Representative Buckley. And since they were talking about jobs earlier, just a quick, just off the top of the head, it'd be a loss of about 75 to 100 jobs in Marion County if you banned medical marijuana facilities. And the main topic would be, it'd just be back to the streets. Under the new law, growers actually have to have a tax ID number and pay taxes. It'll be a normal job, commerce. And I mean, if you ban that, they still have the right to make their money, to pay taxes, and that'll just happen, you know, in your Fred Meyer parking lot, at your gym, you know, on your street. And it seems to me it'd be a lot better to have a regulated facility where you know these things are taking place and law enforcement has the right to come in at any time to inspect and make sure that everything is going according to law and, you know, any regulations thereof. But that's pretty much all I had to say, just speak my piece.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One last chat. One last chance for anybody else to come up, name and address the same, please.
My name is Jeremy Bruce, address 5562 Ross Court, Southeast Salem, Oregon, 97306. I didn't have time, I just was notified of this meeting last night, so I really didn't have time to bring up strong statistics, but I just wanted to speak my piece. I am a supplier of medical cannabis to the industry and the reimbursement storefront model for legal access of medical cannabis for patients has succeeded, I believe. It is now time to make another step forward for, to set guidelines for proper setup and structure of that storefront as our governor has recommended and HB 3460 is put into place. Let's see. Just don't deny safe access to patients just because you guys may have concerns. Study and educate yourself on other programs in other states, as for example, Washington and Colorado are good examples of that. In Washington, licensing is offered for suppliers, processors and retailers. No one person can have all three and inspections are regular. So testing is mandatory and there are different grades to that testing. Dispensaries are dispersed upon the city population and so there's a set number of dispensaries allowed in Washington State and it's based upon the population size of your city. In Colorado, there are different taxation rates depending on whether you are a patient or just an adult use. And in the first month or the first week, according to normal statistics, Colorado made over $5 million in revenue sales and that adjusted to 1.25 million in taxable income for the state. So what I'm getting at is there are good examples to study and the state and county and at the city level, a proper program can benefit everyone, but it really boils down to giving access to patients. So let's keep that in mind and make that happen. Thank you.
All right, if you'd like.
My name is Charlotte Call. I live at 3854 Bartlett Street. And before I took a job at a dispensary, I wanted to make sure I understood what the purpose of medical marijuana was and what made marijuana medicine. And my own personal experience is that I have a family friend that I knew through a church and they were very straight and narrow people and they lost their five-year-old son to cancer. And the only thing that gave that little boy relief was eating medical marijuana. And it was the only thing that made that little boy sleep and it was the only thing that made that little boy feel okay towards the end. They didn't want him on narcotics. They didn't want him to not be able to say goodbye to his family. They wanted him to be able to be conscious and to be aware and to not be in pain. And that's what medical marijuana did for him. And that's what made me want to be part of this business and in the dispensary because it really does help people. I've seen people who are alcoholics that have never taken a sip again. I myself used to be an opiate addict. I don't, I've never, haven't taken a pill in ages because of cannabis. And it really is, and I know that it seems like a scary thing in my family, I come from a strict Catholic family, and that little boy changed my whole family's opinion. My grandfather, who's 91 years old, would vote for medical marijuana to be passed. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, you. I'm going to take one more here if you want to.
My name is Patty Pretis. My address is 4735 Paulette Street Northeast in Kaiser. And just a little bit of background about myself. I just got done working 14 years with the Sheriff's Department, not here, in another county. I worked with inmates, maximum security inmates, and I have a degree in behavioral health and psychology. I did counseling and job coaching for these people. The majority of them were methamphetamine and heroin addicts. It gave me a chance, and a little background also, I'm a grandmother of seven, great-grandmother of one, have four children. I'm nervous, I'm sorry. I just want to say that it gave me a chance over the last 14 years to talk to these people about what causes the crime in our communities. And it wasn't marijuana, it wasn't cannabis of any kind, it was the other drugs. I also, 13 years ago, was the victim of a terrible crime where I was almost killed and it wasn't by any of those drugs, it was from alcohol, which is a legal drug. So my experience has been bad with alcohol and methamphetamines and heroin, the other drugs on the streets, not cannabis. About two years ago, I got some bad arthritis in my knees, crippling arthritis in my knees, where I couldn't walk upstairs. I couldn't get on the floor and play with my grandchildren. And what the doctors wanted to do for me was stick needles, cortisone in my knees, and I don't like needles. So I decided to try medical cannabis. And I've been using it now on a daily basis. I use it in the evening only. I'm an educated, professional woman and I can say that I am now training to do my first marathon in August. I don't have pain anymore. I can walk and I can go upstairs and I can't tell you why. I don't know why it works, but it works. And if you take away the dispensaries, I don't and will not ever buy off the streets. I want to know where my medicine comes from. And so I'm just saying, if you close up the dispensaries, I'm not your typical stereotype, I know. I'm just grandma and I just want to be able to play with my grandchildren. Thank you.
I think we're going to go ahead now with the rest of the meeting, got the kind of the flavor here. Next item's our consent calendar. First is under, where are we at? Commissioner or Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I inherited with this seat the short consent calendar. So, right. So under Public Works, we'll approve item number, approve amendment number one to receive $65,520 from McKay Farms, Inc. and extend the lease of county land adjacent to the North Marion County disposal facility through December 31st, 2018. And under Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing a property tax refund in the amount of $20,580.37 to Kerr Concentrates, Inc.
Our second motion.
All right, it's been moved to second to approve the consent calendar, just ready for the discussion. If you don't hear any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The three action items, the first is under Board of Commissioners, we consider approval of revisions to Administrative 518 Drug and Alcohol Use and Testing. Mina Hansen, Sarah McDonald.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Sarah McDonald with the Marion County Board of Commissioners office.
And I'm Mina Hansen, Business Services Director.
We have before you today a request to consider approval of revisions to an Administrative Policy Number 518, Drug and Alcohol Use and Testing. This is our Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy. The purpose of it is to ensure the safety of our employees, our clients and the general public. This policy then details the processes and the rules under which, under which drugs and alcohol are prohibited. And there are conditions around this such as prescription drug use. Do you want to talk about the changes?
Sure. This policy specifically applies to Marion County employees and volunteers, I want to be clear about that. We use Biomed as a testing company for both our CDL and our non-CDL drug testing. And they looked at our reasonable suspicion policy, which is the one you have in front of you, and felt we really needed to bring a few items into alignment so that we weren't violating some of our CDL holders and our U.S. Coast Guard holders' rights. And specifically, you'll notice that we needed to spell out that if we have reasonable suspicion, that it's not falling under a mandatory test from the Department of Transportation or the U.S. Coast Guard, that we needed to spell that out so that those individuals knew that this policy was separate and apart from whatever may be required regulatorily by their licensing body. So you'll see that that is, the primary change that was made to the policy is to outline that, that this applies in non-regulatory compliance issues. We also needed to clarify in a couple of areas. For example, you'll see under, on page four, which would be Section 3, Subsection C1, that it talked about levels prescribed in collective bargaining agreements. Our collective bargaining agreements don't list specific levels of intoxication, so we did remove that. The other change is if you look on page six at the top under Sub C, you'll see we, this is about reasonable suspicion, it's about people's behaviors. So we wanted to make sure that supervisors knew that we were looking at behaviors in the workplace. And then just a couple of notes in the attached procedures. One is that the, there was a lack of clarity around what we call the medical review officer in non-CDL cases, and so we needed to clarify that Biomed will be the party responsible for finding the MRO. We don't get involved in that. And also clarifying who will set up the random tests on a last chance agreement as well as where those testing results would come to. So just some basic cleanup that we felt was appropriate just in our normal review of the policy. Are there any questions?
Are there?
That one. Not to put you on the spot, mine about to put you on the spot. So in Marion County, we do drug testing, right, for new employees?
For new employees that are in safety-sensitive positions, correct.
Right, okay. And so if someone were to be using marijuana, either medically or otherwise, how has that impacted with the drug testing?
If they are in a pre-employment situation, we do the drug test post offer, but pre-employment, we rely on the federal laws regarding what we call federal presumption. So if the individual is applying for a safety-sensitive position, which we have identified, they're not eligible for employment in Marion County based on federal presumption.
All right, thank you.
Any others?
No, I know we have had some previous conversations about this as we, is our process in updating policies and procedures. And thank you both for keeping on top of all these. And this, this one is especially important in this interesting times we live in and the problems that can be caused for the individual who's abusing drugs, the liability to companies, to government entities. And I noted when I was reviewing this, how this does go back to June of 2003 and we had lots of discussions then. And I was very much the advocate, we need to have a policy here because, of course, we were encouraging businesses in the community of the importance, both to protect themselves from liabilities, but to have a good workforce and keep their workforce healthy and productive. And we have also updated this back in December of 2008 and now again. So I'm just, for the moment, commenting on my appreciation that we're staying on top of these changes. So we are in compliance and it all results in a healthy workplace and keeps the county's liability in check. So thank you. And I don't have any questions on the specifics, again, we've talked about this previously.
Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions, oh, John?
I think it's important for those in the audience, particularly on TV, to understand what a CDL is and it's commercial driver's license. And those commercial driver's licenses are very, very highly regulated and people are not allowed to have one if they're impaired.
And Mr. Chair, before we get to the motion, I just wanted to add, I appreciate mine as answer. And so for new employees, you're saying in a safety-sensitive position, but this is for all Marion County employees, it's not just for people in safety-sensitive positions. And the position of the county is that no employee is to possess, consume, use, manufacture, distribute, cause to be brought, dispense, purchase, sell alcohol, illicit drugs, illegal drugs. So I just wanted to make sure that we're really clear. It doesn't just apply to drivers or to safety-sensitive positions, it's a no-tolerance policy.
That's correct, Commissioner. And maybe I misunderstood your earlier question. We only regularly test new employees. We test all employees if there's reasonable suspicion of impairment in the workplace. And we have a zero-tolerance policy for drug use in the workplace.
Yeah, thank you. And I only asked about new employees, so you did answer the narrow question that I asked, but I realized after this discussion I probably needed to elaborate a little bit so people weren't left with the impression that this policy was just covering a small percentage of our employees.
As Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the revisions to the Administrative Policy Number 518, the Drug and Alcohol Use and Testing Policy.
Our second motion.
All right, it's moved to second that we approve these revisions to Administrative Policy 518. Further discussion? If you hear none, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, excuse me. Next item, consider approval of a resolution opposing the legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries. District Attorney Walton Bagalon, Sheriff Jason Myers. Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. For the record, I'm Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. And I'm here today in support of a resolution opposing the legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries. I'm going to give just a brief background on the legislative history of this law and kind of my feelings on it. In the 2013 session, you heard reference earlier, the House Bill 3460 passed, which legalized or put, set in thirty-four sixty passed, which legalized or put, set in motion, medical marijuana dispensaries in the state. Having had the opportunity to look at this bill, I have a tremendous amount of concerns over this issue, and they begin with the lack of oversight of this program and the lack of local control, local decision-making. My concerns, and I have spoke to the board on numerous occasions, that substance abuse and mental illness are two of the main drivers of resources in public safety, and my concern with this bill and the lack of oversight and lack of local control is that marijuana will be accessible to more than just patients, and it will be accessible to our youth. My history in law enforcement, if we go back prior to being sheriff, I, I supervised a narcotics team. I was a narcotics detective, and I've interviewed hundreds of users. And of those users, in my interviews, I always asked them, you know, what were the drugs that you first started with? And marijuana always came up as one of the initial drugs that they started with. And so my concern is that, from a safety, health and safety purpose, and our youth, that marijuana will be accessible to our youth, in turn, will drive us in more problems in public safety and more resources to be expended.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Sheriff, thank you. My name is Walt Begla, and I serve as the elected district attorney of Marion County. Thank you for this opportunity. It is without reservation that I, as your district attorney, support this resolution in opposing the legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries in Marion County. I believe that the resolution really does reflect the collective commitment of public safety officials and leadership and the citizens of Marion County, and aligns us with federal law and the priorities that have been outlined in federal law. Secondly, I really do think that our community, particularly in the last eight to ten years, has really prioritized some values, and those values revolve around family, the lives of young people, around health, and in public safety. And those values will be at risk as this expands. We, uh, we've been looking at addiction for a very, very long time as a community, and addiction continues an unyielding harm to our citizens. The development of medical marijuana dispensaries, when you look at thirty-four sixty, particularly as contemplated in thirty-four sixty, are diametrically opposed to those values that we've established in Marion County. And if you look at some of the flaws in thirty-four sixty, specifically weak internal controls, no background checks, lack of statewide enforcement capacity, it is untenable that that would be coming forward.
All right. That'll have to stop.
So in all of these realms, it's important that, that we come forward with compelling rational reasons why this is not going to be healthy for Marion County. And I think the sheriff has shared some of those concerns about youth. I share those concerns. It is true that marijuana is a, an addictive gateway drug. You know, if you look at, look at our juvenile department, I, I look back to what the judges out there have experienced, our staff over the years, and the experience of young people coming through that. They start drinking at age ten, they add marijuana at age twelve, they add... And they add methamphetamine at fourteen, and one of the greatest concerns we have now, if you speak with the detectives that we have, and our, is the problem with heroin and, and those individuals beginning their experience with marijuana. So, again, I would like to make clear, I would like to make clear...
All right. Let's, let's be clear. We, we don't, we've had some opportunity for public comment, and we're not looking for any more. If you can't hold it to yourself, you're going to be asked to leave. Okay?
I'd like to make clear that the resolution really does reflect the interests of the citizens of Marion County, and we in public safety support it. So, thank, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here on this really important issue.
Questions?
I have, go, if you want to go first.
I don't have a question.
Okay, I have a few, quite a few, so.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for coming and for sharing your comments. First question, and Gloria, I'm going to involve you in this, whether you like it or not. So the scope of this resolution is, as I understand it, for Marion County unincorporated areas. Is that correct? Can Marion County regulate dispensaries within incorporated city boundaries? Maybe that's a question for you, Gloria.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a resolution, this is a policy statement, so it is not an operative document that's going to regulate anything. So it is the policy statement of the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, and the district attorney. If the board were to consider banning or regulating, it would only be effective in the unincorporated areas of Marion County, which is the jurisdiction. Cities would have the right to choose for themselves how they want to approach this, this subject. So to the extent that the Board of Commissioners are elected countywide, the sheriff is elected countywide, and the district attorney is elected countywide, it represents your countywide policy statement on this matter, but it is not the operative document to actually do any regulation or banning.
Thank you. District Attorney Begla, and perhaps Gloria too, I'd like to expand a little bit on the regulation aspect because you raised two or three examples of where you believe that these facilities are not well-regulated, and I heard people say, we'll read the bill. So it sounds like there's some disagreement over that. Could you maybe elaborate on why you believe that the regulations aren't sufficient in the legislation?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there are two areas of specific concern, and these were really vetted at a statewide level recently in anticipation of the legislative session. And two of the critically analyzed components that the district attorneys had concern about, the sheriffs had concern about, and the chiefs association had concerns about was the capacity set up to actually regulate and implement the statute in terms of staffing and that type of capacity statewide. The second one is that there are absolutely, absolutely no internal controls whatsoever over who runs the dispensaries in terms of background checks and criminal history. So those were the two really focused areas of concern that we had in law enforcement, and those were brought forward in very public means. I think there's a well-published letter to the governor's office led by Rob Bovett at the time was Lincoln County District Attorney. That, that memo was readily available for folks to look at and, and come to their own conclusions, but that was our conclusion from looking at the bill.
I'm sorry, yeah, you, yeah. So Gloria, the other question that I had that relates to the regulation piece, and I know we've had some discussions about this as a board, is that as I understand it, or as you explained it to us, the, the businesses, there is, they're kept private, there's no requirement that they actually let the board know where these businesses are? Is that, explain to me what that, how that works.
The certification under the statutes, the certification for a medical marijuana dispensary is an application through the Oregon Health Authority. They also have put in the Oregon Health Authority that the location of the facility and the person responsible for the facility, the PRF, and that the PRF, the person responsible for the facility, is the one who has a background check, but that's all not necessarily anyone else connected, and that could either be an owner or an operator. So it's a very limited scope of a background check. But the facilities and that person responsible under the state law are kept confidential by the Oregon Health Authority. They will not, and they are by law prohibited from disclosing the location or the person responsible. So that's, some of the concerns that have been raised by the various associations and organizations and, and local governments looking at this.
The next question, and maybe Sheriff Myers, this one you could, I could throw at you first. So we were asked to consider the experience of Washington, Colorado, and some of the public comment, and I know that you've talked with us about information that's coming out of Washington and Colorado as they begin to implement their laws and some concerns that law enforcement, public safety officials have about that. Can you share some of those concerns here with us now?
Sure. I, I think we're going to continue to see more because both those states, the new law went into effect on January first, and so there'll probably be more, more data forthcoming. But leading up to that, I know Washington State did a study on automobile crashes and saw fifty percent rise in individuals under the influence of marijuana in automobile crashes. So, leading up, that was a study done prior to January first, just leading up to that, there's been an increase in that particular area.
Thank you. And I wanted to tag on to your comment about early onset, and I love having cell phones that you can get the internet right away. So I was, I have a doctorate in special education and community resources and have done evaluation studies, and about ten years ago, did a study in Douglas County where we actually, people went in and interviewed inmates in the Marion, in the Douglas County jail, and then asked them about their use of all different drugs, opiates, methamphetamine, marijuana, also alcohol, cigarettes. And then I did an analysis of those surveys, and this is on, this is on the web, and it's was in, published in January two thousand and four. But I just wanted to read a paragraph of this. It says, "Graph 10 portrays startling data about the relationship between early exposure to drugs and alcohol and future meth use. Eighty percent of heavy meth users and drug-of-choice users." So we asked people, are you a meth user? Would you consider yourself a heavy meth user, just a kind of an occasional meth user? And then we also asked, what's your drug of choice? And if people said meth, so this was a subset of people. So they had tried their first cigarette before age fifteen. So it's eighty percent tried their first cigarette before age fifteen compared with twenty point seven percent of non-meth users. Seventy point seven percent of heavy meth users were drinking alcohol before age fifteen compared with thirty-six point four percent of non-meth users. Sixty point three percent of heavy meth users were using marijuana before age fifteen compared with eighteen point two percent of non-meth users. And more than twenty percent of heavy meth users and drug-of-choice users were using meth before age fifteen compared with zero percent of non-meth users. So this connection to early onset is well-documented, and it was documented in this study in a rural community in Oregon. And so I know there are people here that probably wouldn't believe this, and maybe they're part of the eighteen percent that didn't go on to use heavier drugs, but those that are working in the field know that there is a strong, strong connection between early use of cigarettes, alcohol, marijuana, and people then that go on to other drugs. I just wanted to put that on the record because I know that from my own analysis of the data. And then I guess, and I don't know if you wanted to comment on that or if you wanted to just let that stand on its own. The last question I had, or maybe it's just a comment also, my understanding was that when there was a vote on the legalization of marijuana, most recently Marion County voters overwhelmingly voted against it. I can't remember the statistics, but it was somewhere around, I think, seventy percent now or something. I can't, I don't want to quote a figure, but it was, I mean, we heard some polling today about the perspective of Oregonians generally, but I know in Marion County, we've had an opportunity to vote on this issue, and Marion County voters have not been in favor of, of legalizing marijuana.
Going last, it allows me to say thank you very much, first of all, Sheriff Myers and District Attorney Begla and Commissioner Carlson for your questions and the information you've shared, so I don't have to repeat all of that. What I would say, especially to some of the comments that have just been made here this morning, I have read the bill thirty-four sixty. I'm very familiar with it. I have been doing a considerable amount of research myself over the last many months, and I, I know that many of you know this. This is an extremely complex issue, and the more items, individual items that are talked about, or we could zero into personal experiences, that's just one little minute piece of the puzzle that is so enormous. It's not good for the health and the safety, the well-being of our community, and especially for our children, to rush to making decisions when there hasn't been thorough research by everyone, when data's manipulated, when personal opinions, because of life experiences, and I, I empathize with the tragedies that people are enduring. I, I get that. But there's not been enough research that has been shared, that's been discussed, and people today are so busy just trying to go to work and raise a family, and they don't have the time to do the research that maybe some of you have done or that we're doing, and then they don't have the time to sit down and have a thorough conversation either with family or friends or in the community or at some kind of community gathering to really, really know the full impacts and the full ramifications, how destructive. We just say, fine, go ahead. And this thirty-four sixty, as Gloria Roy has explained, it protects, who knows where the illegal activity is happening because nobody knows where the legal activity might be happening under this particular bill. And we are aware there, in fact, next week, February eleventh, at the legislature, there are two bills that are under discussion, House Bill fifteen fifty-six, that is a referral to the people that would totally legalize marijuana use. Why are we doing this? Why? Excuse me, it's my turn to speak. There's this rush to just act on emotions without having a thorough discussion. There's also House Bill thirty, fifteen thirty-one that does provide, and as was mentioned, we're talking about the county right here today, not cities, and that provides opt-out opportunities for cities, and, and that's, that's their decision. On the federal level, this is the drug schedule, and this is what I think people really need to take pause. This is just one of the many, many issues that people need to step back and really think about and have a discussion and fully understand. Schedule one. Schedule one drugs, substances or chemicals are defined as drugs with no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse. Schedule one drugs are the most dangerous drugs of all the drug schedules with potentially severe psychological or physical dependence. Some examples, marijuana. This is, this is, marijuana is a schedule one fed with the federal government. Now, true, Oregon has it as a schedule two. Still, it's right up there with all these other drugs that we're talking about this morning that are so addictive, put people in jail and prison because the crimes committed. We need a much, much deeper understanding of the physical effect of this drug, and there, there, again, this bill, it's already been talked about, the lack of the ability to enforce, the lack of what's the product we're dealing with, who's going to really be overseeing the purity and what's in it. Everybody's body reacts differently to this. Anyway, I could go on and on here. The point is, I think we are rushing to make a decision without being fully informed as a community, as decision-makers, and that is what needs to happen. And if we could, instead of just saying, well, we're just going to legalize marijuana, everybody, you know... everybody, you know, recreational use. And not knowing how it's going to affect you, the impact, and my biggest concern is children. It's the message we send to our children. It's what happens in the homes where marijuana is being used. We talk about smoking in a car is detrimental to a child. Well, what about a child stuck in a house where there's marijuana smoke? Or mom makes marijuana brownies, and the child eats them and ends up in the hospital, severely ill, or worse? Well, it's happened. I've got the newspaper articles. So, there are differing opinions. Let's have that discussion, and let's break this discussion down into what is the substance we're talking about and fully understand it. Let's break it down to, if there's a legitimate discussion about medical use, where are our pharmacies? A doctor can't prescribe marijuana. Now, doesn't that lead to a lot of questions? Why can't a doctor? Excuse me. I have information here that I'm referring to. So let's break this discussion down. Let's not rush to doing something that I believe is very, very detrimental to our community and to our children and to the well-being of our society. Let's slow down and do this in a much more, with much more caution and deliberation and actual, factual information shared. And when I have in front of me, my county sheriff and my district attorney, who feel so strongly about this, and their organizations, I believe, too, having these same discussions, it gives me pause. And I think that there's a lot of validity to being very, very cautious before we proceed. And that's what this resolution does.
All right. You really weren't the last. I had a couple of comments myself. And that's all right.
And you know, I know your comments.
Most of them have been pretty well-covered. And most of my, not most, but a big part of my objection is this, the local control inability to make decisions, the state forcing, leaving ourselves to violate federal law. And I wondered if, and I don't know if you really addressed it, or I missed it, but could you, either, well, I'll look at you, Walt, or Gloria, whoever, kind of help me with that a little bit. Either one?
Mr. Chair, lawyers can have different opinions on whether or not the state can preempt a local government despite the federal prohibition. And our organization, the District Attorneys Association, and other law enforcement have looked at this closely, and I, and I don't think they can. I think the counties can regulate this. And at the end of the day, I think the Constitution and the law would support that, that we can, we can regulate, as long as there's a rational basis for it, we can regulate at a local level. And the state cannot tell us to otherwise.
In the last paragraph of the resolution, let's summarize it, but the, says Marion County Board of Commissioners, County Sheriff, and District Attorney, oppose legalization of marijuana and find that allowing operation of medical marijuana facilities, restoring, dispensing of marijuana to the contrary to their oaths to support the Constitution of United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oregon, laws thereof. So, it does put us in a precarious position, and one that I don't appreciate at all. The other part, a local option, as Commissioner Carlson pointed out, if the citizens of Marion County don't want this, they've already said they don't want it, then how come they don't have the ability to make something special for their county? I don't know if I was one that brought this subject up a month or two ago, but I see other cities and counties grappling with it. But if nothing else, I don't want Marion County to become a center, the place to go. It looks like there'll be other places, and if people want to get at it, fine. But somehow, we can be special here in Marion County and not facilitate a lessening of standards on controls. So that local option, this hasn't, that local option's important to me. Now, I've heard people here this morning, and I know of cases where apparently marijuana does give some relief. But here, I don't hear anything. And I heard a buzz in the crowd, and I don't want to hear it again, when it terms to who's giving these prescriptions. But the anecdotal stories I hear is in-house doctors, or go get one, what do you need? If there was a true state-certified place that, to check the validity of those needs, that would change my opinion. But I think this is, this is, right now, just an opportunity for the, essentially, the free expansion and distribution of marijuana. And then the other ones that have been dressed already, oversight, and certainly, public safety gets my attention. So, I asked for something like this resolution, and it seems to fit my bill, and I'll be very much in support of it.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the resolution that opposes the legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries.
My second motion, I would like to, just for clarification, on a couple of issues that were brought up, I have a book here in front of me, put out by the Oregon Health Authority, The Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. Page 12, it says, "The program will conduct a criminal background check on the grower." The grower. So, for that clarification. Also, it says on page six, "Medical marijuana cannot be prescribed." The federal government classifies marijuana as a Schedule I narcotic, which means a physician can not prescribe it. So, the other thing that is really disturbing to me, we, in the whole overall discussion about abuse, substance abuse, whatever the substance may be, what we're doing clearly isn't working. So I'd ask the question again, so why do we want to rush into another substance that is addictive and can be abused and really puts our children and our families and our community well-being at risk?
All right. You did second the motion.
I did.
And I have one more comment that I want to put on the record. I had another piece here. This is in drugabuse.gov. So I think this is a federal government website where they combine studies, and just a couple paragraphs here about the impacts of marijuana. Says marijuana also affects brain development, and when it is used heavily by young people, its effects on thinking and memory may last a long time or even be permanent. A recent study of marijuana users who began using in adolescence revealed substantially reduced connectivity among brain areas responsible for learning and memory. And a large, long-term study in New Zealand showed that people who began smoking marijuana heavily in their teens lost an average of eight points in IQ between age 13 and 38. Importantly, the lost cognitive abilities were not fully restored in those who quit smoking marijuana as adults. And then it talks about other health effects of marijuana, cardiopulmonary effects, mental health effects, it's an irritant to the lungs. Frequent marijuana smokers can have many of the same respiratory problems experienced by tobacco smokers, and it goes through what those are, acute chest illness, risk of lung infections. It says, "One study found that people who smoke marijuana frequently but do not smoke tobacco have more health problems, miss more days of work than those who don't smoke marijuana, mainly because of respiratory illnesses." So, when people say it has no impacts, I don't think that that's true.
All right. All right, we have, it's first and seconded, to approve the resolution opposing legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries. Any further discussion? Then I'll call a question. All in favor, say, you're out of order. Call a question. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Milne?
I said aye.
And aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
They're killing people.
I don't know, kills people every year, do I?
I know, you guys.
Medical patients having access to medical data.
All right. I need to get this meeting back in order. Let's have a five-minute recess, and we'll be back for our third item. All right, we are back. It's 10:30. Continue our February 5th Board of Commissioners meeting. We have one more item. Under District Attorney, we consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Marion County and the Oregon State Hospital for Prosecution of Chronically Violent Patients and Reimbursement of Costs Up to $200,000 Through June 30th to 15th. Walt Beglaw?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Walt Beglaw. I serve as the elected district attorney. I've asked Paige Clarkson, a trial team manager within the district attorney's office, to join me here at the table to discuss this intergovernmental agreement. The agreement number is 144309. So, just a few kind of opening comments about this. The, kind of the overarching principles that drive our work around the Oregon State Hospital and mentally ill is, one, is that the state hospital is part of the Marion County public safety conversation at all times. And that it is a unique community that we serve. And finally, that, and I've said this for as long as I've been in office, that the staff and patients there deserve to be safe and treated with respect, and all the work that we do within our offices is driven towards that end. So this IGA provides a unique opportunity to, one, promote accountability for violent behavior within the Oregon State Hospital. Secondly, to kind of preserve the therapeutic objectives that they have with the patients at the Oregon State Hospital. And finally, to continue to facilitate the invaluable relationships and recognize the stakeholders in addressing the mental health needs of Oregonians, and in particular, in Marion County, and in particular, in the state hospital. So what this agreement does is adds a measured and carefully assessed capacity to address violent crime inside the state hospital. And again, we recognize there are some limitations to that. We want to make sure that they're getting the treatment that they need, and that we're not just stepping in prosecuting and recognize that unique concern around those with mental illness who have committed a crime. And secondly, recognize the limitations of resources and how it impacts all of our stakeholders. So, in pulling this together, we have carefully consulted with the Oregon State Hospital, the Oregon State Police, because anytime there's a crime in the state hospital, it's the state police that does the investigation, just like the sheriff's deputies and investigators would do something in Marion County. OSP, the state police responds to that facility. And then we have carefully discussed this with the sheriff and the jail commander, because we know that ultimately, this could impact the jail as well, if we choose to make a prosecution and lodge an individual there. So those were the stakeholders that we consulted. And what this does is secures funding for a prosecutor and provides an opportunity to pay for jail capacity if that, if and as that, just those decisions are made. So, I just would appreciate the opportunity to move forward with this agreement. The really reflects kind of the comprehensive work we're doing in and around the county from, at a local level and into the state institution as well. It allows us to kind of also look at what we're doing with civil commitment. We've got a lot of, as you know, the board has directed us, and we've taken on the capacity to do civil commitment process, and that's all kind of dialed in and working. And this position and this funding also, it interrelates to those commitments that we have under this agreement as well. So, with that, I'm just going to say that I have to thank Senator Winters for her leadership in making this opportunity come forward. Frankly, she made this happen. I guess that's the bottom line. And we're committed to doing the very best job to implement as well. So Paige is here. If you had any kind of questions, she manages the team and has direct contact with the leadership at all levels within the institution and with those stakeholders I discussed with you. And that's, that's really where the great work gets done, as we identify cases that we can move forward with and how those will be utilized. So, thanks again, and appreciate the opportunity to give me an overview of it, because it's going to be in, through July of 2015 is the financial component of this. And I guess, I guess I would ask, just kind of put out there, is it, maybe this sets up an opportunity to continue this with the state legislature, but this is not something that I would, if the funding went away, I'd come back to the county and ask to augment, because I want the state to shoulder the responsibility. So, thank you.
Paige, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add unless you have questions. I think, I think Mr. Beglaw covered all of that.
But Walt, if they don't augment it, don't we by default pay it? Or we don't prosecute them? Where are you going?
Mr. Chair, I mean, we're already doing the work. And we do the cases. This really acknowledges that work, that Marion County as a system contributes to this. And, you know, we're going to continue to do good work. It's just how effective can we be, and how do we prioritize those decision-making? And this is, this allows us to reemphasize that. But you're right, Commissioner, you're right.
Well, I've been saying this for a long time, the impact of the agencies that come around from, from around the state and become our responsibility, and we accept that. But it's time it be recognized, and some funding follow it too. So I'm very much in favor of accepting this. Excuse me if you had something.
Oh, no, I just had a couple of questions that I just thought of. So, well, first a comment and then a question. I'm really pleased that, I mean, thinking over time and where we were with the Oregon State Hospital, and I'm remembering a meeting down in the basement of the Statesman Journal, and people, you know, all concerned about that, I think that this is really the culmination of some great discussions and some mutual understandings. And so I'm just really grateful that you're bringing it forward and the work that you're doing. And I know Paige, you were involved a lot in that work. My question involves, and it's kind of a technical question, but there's, there are a number of data sets that are required for invoicing, a lot of factors that are listed here in the statement of work. So is this data that we're already collecting? Is this new data? Is this going to create any additional hardship on the district attorney's office in terms of collecting that data?
It's both of those things. Some of it is data that we already have, some of it are, a lot of the requirements or things we're already meeting. We already do these things. And yet, in order for the, for the agreement to be successful, there had to be some sort of metrics to measure what we were doing and how we were responding to the needs of the state hospital. We're having, I'm currently in discussions with, with our staff just to tweak the way we pull data out of our current district attorney case management system. But it's something that's fairly easy to monitor and fairly easy to do. With this money, as Walt stated, we'll be able to add a district attorney, part of their job will be to monitor those numbers and make sure that, that we're, we're keeping clear as to what they are, and we're meeting those obligations for the state hospital.
So I'm hearing you say it's built into the cost of the contract.
It is.
Great, okay, perfect.
One small question. This funding goes through June 30th of 2015. Does this go back at all? I know you've already stated you're already doing, doing this work, but will this reimbursement cover some previously done work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Milne, it was, it was a biannual allocation. And we're at that point where we can actually move forward with it. We've been doing the work. I'm prepared now to move forward with submitting a position request, and that'll be compressed over the remaining 17 months, as long as the commissioners support this. So, we're a little bit behind that curve, but we have been doing the work.
No, that's, that's good. I just wanted that clarified too, for our viewers. And again, another important job that the district attorney's office does, and at the state hospital, so the state funding really ought to be there. But, there aren't any other questions? Then I would move for approval of the intergovernmental agreement between Marion County and the Oregon State Hospital for Prosecution of Chronically Violent Patients and reimbursement of costs up to $200,000 through June 30th, 2015.
I will second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the motion regarding intergovernmental agreement between Marion County and Oregon State Hospital. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's, thank you. That's the end of our action items this morning. All that's, there are no public hearings scheduled. So all that's left to do this morning is to read the places we'll be together in the next week. This afternoon or at noon, today, Wednesday, the 5th, Marion County, Woodburn meeting at Luis's Takerere, ah, yeah, I knew it. Luis's in 523 Front Street in Woodburn. Thursday, 9:30 to 11:30, Department Head, elected officials meeting in the commissioner's boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast. Monday, the 10th, our weekly management update meeting in the Columbia and Saniam Conference Room, 451 Division Street Northeast in Salem, MAPS Building, 2nd floor. Room, 451 Division Street, Northeast and Salem, MAPS Building, second floor. And that's followed the next day, excuse me, Tuesday, 7 to 8, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, community forum in the Kaiser Civic Center, 903 Chamawa Road, Northeast in Kaiser. Then we'll have, also at the same time, I guess, now, how am I going to do that? I hadn't recognized it. But we have a meeting, a regular meeting with Stateon, and the Marion County meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third and Stateon, that's from 7:30 to 8:30 on Tuesday. That's followed at 10 o'clock by a special housing authority meeting, Columbia River Conference Room, 451 Division Street. Then at 3 o'clock, a work session having to do with public works, metal recovery and ash management overview. That'll be an interesting one, and we're looking for results there. Our next board session will be next Wednesday at 9 o'clock on the 12th. And then we have our State of the County presentation at noon at 1300 Broadway Street, Northeast in Salem, Broadway Commons. And that's followed Wednesday at 3:30 to 5 by the Economic Development Advisory Board, a location to be announced. Anything else this morning?
Oh, I can't resist saying this. Just as we all know, this whole issue of marijuana, it's difficult. There are opinions on, very entrenched opinions, lots of people in the middle, and as I said, hence the need for more public discussion based on facts and trying to separate the issues so that if we really want good solutions in Oregon to address a major, major issue, then we've got to be able to break it down into the individual pieces and not confuse the conversations and end up with poor information. So, while it was a very lively board session, I really do appreciate people coming. It's important for us to know what their thoughts are, the position they hold, and why they hold that position. And so, I'm pleased. I asked, too, if people give me their contact information. I was invited to go visit a dispensary. I guess I'd look to the sheriff, do I need approval to do that, so I don't get in trouble? I do, I want to know more about this, and I hope that we can continue this discussion as Chair Brantano read. On Tuesday morning at 7 o'clock, the Public Safety Coordinating Council is having a community forum on this discussion, and hopefully, we can share really good factual information that, I keep referring to it as kind of a primary, marijuana 101, if you will, but that people can attend this, learn some of these many, many facets of a difficult, complex issue, and then be able to go back to their communities and have a discussion, then the communities can determine what they want to do. And that's where the idea of the forum came from, is we all got the, what's the county doing? What do we need to do in our community? So, the forum is largely and mostly in response to that. But the more I hear information and people come and talk about it, it just really highlights the need for a much more thorough discussion, and we're aware that the legislature is going to do that. But I'll just reiterate, at this point in time, with the information I have, and I'm very, very fearful of the rush to just do something to do it, because we know with what we do have as law in front of us, there was a rush, people didn't read the legislation, they didn't take time to look at what the ramifications were going to be. So, we can have the discussion, slow it down, but don't put in place some laws that are going to complicate an issue and bring more, again, we're not doing a really good job of addressing abuse in other areas, so why do we want to compound a problem? So, that's all I'll say, but I do, good, good conversation, good discussion, even lively as it was.
I'll just say something in a totally different topic.
Yeah, I want something.
Totally different subject.
Monday, there was, it wasn't an official groundbreaking ceremony, but there was a big piece of equipment out there, and they had the World War II monument ceremony. It wasn't really even a ceremony, but a bunch of people gathering, I guess a gathering. And I had the opportunity to swing by there, and it was just really nice, and talked with Jim Willis, who had come before us as a board, and he thanked us. He said he was treated very well before the Board of Commissioners, and Dick Withnell was there, he was telling him that. So, I just thought it was neat, and we've had discussion about this here before the board session, and it's wonderful to see that they've actually raised the money and they're breaking ground, and it's going to happen.
That's the Vietnam Veterans, right?
World War II.
World War II. Right, we already have in the other park, the other memorial.
By Courthouse Square, by the way, pointing to it. Can I go back to marijuana again? No, well, we do.
No, go ahead.
I've said the points, and I cared about it when we voted, but I anticipated ordinance coming, and some thoughts go through my mind to make sure people know that that's what we're going to talk about, and provide the opportunity. I don't want to hear that we didn't give them the opportunity. If you notice today, no one had signed up, and we still made that space available. So, that isn't our goal, but we do have to get through our meetings, and we have to think it through a little bit when that decision is made.
Right. So, I don't know if we even have contact information for them, so we'll have to figure that out.
No, but we'll have to make sure it's out and highlighted.
Well, I have two people who gave me contact information, so if we have.
All right, anything else this morning? Some of us are perhaps off to Woodburn.
Oh, yeah, it's getting late, yeah.
Yeah, we're getting there. Anything else? Then I will call this meeting adjourned.